We're going to get this meeting started. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I am going to call to order the Planning Commission meeting. The date is September 16, 2025, and this is the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, and the time is 6:03 PM. Will everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America in two republics to stand one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
All right, thank you. Can we have a roll call, please? Commissioner McNally?
Here.
Commissioner Hoffman? Commissioner Flaherty?
Here.
Commissioner Isant?
Here.
Chairperson Hirsch?
Here.
Let me check on the audio issue. One second. Testing, testing.
Test, test.
It sounds like we're good.
Okay, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are going to move on to item number four, approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a vote?
Commissioner McNally? Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Flaherty?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Isant?
Yes.
Chairperson Hirsch?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number five, public comment. So this is the time for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on any items within the Commission's jurisdiction and on items where public comment will not be taken. The public is invited to attend and provide public comment. The public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker from those presence in the council chambers and via remote participation options listed on the agenda. This time allotment may be modified due to time constraints at the discretion of the Chair. No action will be taken on matters raised in oral and written communications except that the Planning Commission may take action to schedule issues raised during the public comment for a future agenda. Speakers with comments regarding departmental operations are encouraged to submit those comments directly to the Director, and members of the audience will have a future opportunity to speak on items pulled from consent calendar for separate discussion. And, you know, I just want to, I believe we have a majority of people here in chambers tonight to talk about one of our items that comes up later on our public hearing agenda. So we're really going to try and focus the general public comment this evening to be limited to items that are not on the meeting agenda. Members of the public in the chambers and members on Zoom may participate, and there's a three-minute time allotment per speaker. So do we have anyone here that would like to speak public comment for non-agendated items?
Hello, Laura Penney here. Since the majority of people here are 47B, I believe, I could be wrong, is there a way that the Commission could move that forward, 7A? With all due respect, thank you.
Is there anyone else with a general public comment? Seeing none, can we see if there's anyone online?
No hands are raised.
Okay, then I will close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to item number six, consent calendar. So the following matters will be acted upon collectively with a single motion and vote to approve with the majority consent of the Planning Commission. Commissioners may orally register a negative vote on any consent calendar item without pulling the item for separate consideration before the vote on the consent calendar. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the Commissioner removes the item from the consent calendar, either under approval of the agenda or under items before the vote on the consent calendar. And items removed will be a separate discussion and will be provided a separate public comment period. Do any of my colleagues want to pull an item from the consent calendar for separate discussion? And if not, I will entertain a motion.
No.
No.
No, and move to approve.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a vote?
Voting is now open. Motion carries.
Great, thank you. All right, so we are now going to move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting, starting with item 7A, a precise development plan, case number PDP 24-18, conditional use permit number CUP 24-15, vesting tentative parcel map number 84662 for a new two-unit residential building 30 feet in height, developed as condominiums at 1011 Manhattan Avenue, case number 25-CDZ-128. That's in the multifamily residential R3 in coastal zone. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Chairperson and Commissioners. It's nice to be before you again so soon after last Monday's meeting. Similar to last Monday, this is a two-unit condo development, and as the Chairperson said, the address is 1011 Manhattan Avenue. Next slide, please. Thank you. The request before you this evening, as stated in the agenda, is to approve a conditional use permit, a precise development plan, and a tentative parcel map to allow two new condominium buildings, and to determine that this project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Next slide. The subject property is an interior lot developed at 3,994 square feet. It's currently developed as a single-family home, which was built in 1913, but it has been significantly remodeled and added to since that time. As such, a historic resource assessment concluded that the building would not be eligible for listing as a historic resource, as it did not meet any of the criteria for inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places, the California Register of Historic Resources, and also it was not part of the City of Hermosa Beach's landmark list. Furthermore, the site was not found to be associated with any historic events or persons, and there will be no net loss of housing, and in fact, there will be an increase of one unit. Next slide, please. So in this slide, you can see the existing conditions of the single-family residents viewed both from Manhattan Avenue and from Palm Drive. The approval of this project would increase the number of units by one, as existing single-family will be demolished and two new homes are proposed to be constructed. And additionally, based on information collected from the prior residents of the property via forms furnished by the city, no units were deemed protected units and need not be replaced. Next slide, please. Shown here is the city's zoning map to provide additional context, showing the location of the property in relation to the adjacent streets, zoning districts, and residences. Next slide. I'll tell you a little bit about the project. The applicant proposes to construct the two new condominium buildings with the unit closest to Manhattan Avenue identified as Unit 1 and Unit 2 behind that. Unit 1 is slightly larger at 3,084 square feet and Unit 2 at 3,000 square feet. Vehicular access to this site will be provided from the rear off of Palm Drive via a single nine-foot, two-inch-wide, long shared driveway. This driveway will lead to two car garages, and this property also proposes two guest parking spaces rather than the minimum of one. Each unit will have a basement and two non-subterranean floors with decks off of both floors, and trees and landscaping will be provided for this site as well. Next slide. This table demonstrates how the project is fully compliant with the development standards within the R3 zone, including minimum lot area, height, lot coverage, open space, and parking. Next slide, please. This project exceeds the minimum of 300 square feet of open space per unit and will provide three trash bins per home. Next slide. Thank you. In addition to meeting the development standards within the R3 zone, the project is also compliant with the condominium standards, as shown in this slide, including a minimum unit size, minimum private storage space, and the required front yard setback. And next slide, please. Anticipated impacts from this project and the approval of the CUP, PDP, and tentative parcel map are shown. Expected impacts are transitory in nature and pertain to construction noise, dust, and vibrations. Approval of this project would result in the increase of housing and would provide ownership opportunities. Next slide, please. Thank you. Here you can see the proposed elevations of the west, as it fronts on Palm, the garage door, and on the east along Manhattan Avenue, and their renderings to display the architectural style. Next. Thank you. This slide provides a north elevation emphasizing the grade change of the site and compliance with the maximum building height, which is a maximum of 30 feet. Next, please. And here is our south elevation highlighting the view decks taking advantage of the west-facing direction. Next slide. This is the proposed basement floor level plan for each unit. Both garages and both guest parking spaces are at this level, as well as the laundry area and elevators. Unit 2 is provided with a bedroom and attached bathroom and game room. Next slide. On the first floor of each unit lies the primary bedroom, suite, and bath, with Unit 1 having three additional bedrooms and baths, and Unit 2 providing two bedrooms and baths, such that each home has four bedrooms. At this level, there is also an elevator and a stairway leading to the second floor. We'll take a look at that second floor. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is the second floor of Unit 1, which accommodates the kitchen, great room, and a powder room with that large west-facing deck accommodating the open space and elevator and stairway. Next slide. This is a virtual mirror image, a similar floor plan found here on the second floor of Unit 2, also with the great room and bathroom, elevator and stairway, and a viewing deck. Next slide, please. As depicted in this roof plan, you can see the staggered decks below, but there are no, I'm sorry, this roof plan, but there are no roof decks proposed for this project, unlike some of our others. Next, please. So this project before you tonight has been thoroughly evaluated for conformance with the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code standards for conditional use permits, as identified in Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, Section 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7. 7.
We're going to get this meeting started. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I am going to call to order the Planning Commission meeting. The date is September 16, 2025, and this is the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, and the time is 6:03 PM. Will everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America in two republics to stand one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
All right, thank you. Can we have a roll call, please? Commissioner McNally?
Here.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Here.
Commissioner Isant?
Here.
Chairperson Hirsch?
Here.
Let me check on the audio issue. One second.
Test, test.
It sounds like we're good.
Okay, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are going to move on to item number four, approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a vote?
Commissioner McNally? Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Flaherty?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Isant?
Yes.
Chairperson Hirsch?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number five, public comment. So this is the time for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on any items within the Commission's jurisdiction and on items where public comment will not be taken. The public is invited to attend and provide public comment. The public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker from those presence in the council chambers and via remote participation options listed on the agenda. This time allotment may be modified due to time constraints at the discretion of the Chair. No action will be taken on matters raised in oral and written communications, except that the Planning Commission may take action to schedule issues raised during the public comment for a future agenda. Speakers with comments regarding departmental operations are encouraged to submit those comments directly to the Director, and members of the audience will have a future opportunity to speak on items pulled from consent calendar for separate discussion. And, you know, I just want to, I believe we have a majority of people here in chambers tonight to talk about one of our items that comes up later on our public hearing agenda. So we're really going to try and focus the general public comment this evening to be limited to items that are not on the meeting agenda. Members of the public in the chambers and members on Zoom may participate, and there's a three-minute time allotment per speaker. So do we have anyone here that would like to speak public comment for non-agendated items?
Hello, Laura Penney here. Since the majority of people here are 47B, I believe, I could be wrong, is there a way that the Commission could move that forward, 7A? With all due respect, thank you.
Is there anyone else with a general public comment? Seeing none, can we see if there's anyone online?
No hands are raised.
Okay, then I will close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to item number six, consent calendar. So the following matters will be acted upon collectively with a single motion and vote to approve with the majority consent of the Planning Commission. Commissioners may orally register a negative vote on any consent calendar item without pulling the item for separate consideration before the vote on the consent calendar. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the Commissioner removes the item from the consent calendar, either under approval of the agenda or under items before the vote on the consent calendar. And items removed will be a separate discussion and will be provided a separate public comment period. Do any of my colleagues want to pull an item from the consent calendar for separate discussion? And if not, I will entertain a motion.
No.
No.
No, and move to approve.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a vote?
Voting is now open. Motion carries.
Great, thank you. All right, so we are now going to move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting, starting with item 7A, a precise development plan, case number PDP 24-18, conditional use permit number CUP 24-15, vesting tentative parcel map number 84662 for a new two-unit residential building 30 feet in height, developed as condominiums at 1011 Manhattan Avenue, case number 25-CDD-128. That's in the multifamily residential R3 in coastal zone. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Chairperson and Commissioners. It's nice to be before you again so soon after last Monday's meeting. Similar to last Monday, this is a two-unit condo development, and as the Chairperson said, the address is 1011 Manhattan Avenue. Next slide, please. Thank you. The request before you this evening, as stated in the agenda, is to approve a conditional use permit, a precise development plan, and a tentative parcel map to allow two new condominium buildings, and to determine that this project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Next slide. The subject property is an interior lot developed at 3,994 square feet. It's currently developed as a single-family home, which was built in 1913, but it has been significantly remodeled and added to since that time. As such, a historic resource assessment concluded that the building would not be eligible for listing as a historic resource, as it did not meet any of the criteria for inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places, the California Register of Historic Resources, and also it was not part of the City of Hermosa Beach's landmark list. Furthermore, the site was not found to be associated with any historic events or persons, and there will be no net loss of housing, and in fact, there will be an increase of one unit. Next slide, please. So in this slide, you can see the existing conditions of the single-family residents viewed both from Manhattan Avenue and from Palm Drive. The approval of this project would increase the number of units by one, as existing single-family will be demolished and two new homes are proposed to be constructed. And additionally, based on information collected from the prior residents of the property via forms furnished by the city, no units were deemed protected units and need not be replaced. Next slide, please. Shown here is the city's zoning map to provide additional context, showing the location of the property in relation to the adjacent streets, zoning districts, and residences. Next slide. I'll tell you a little bit about the project. The applicant proposes to construct the two new condominium buildings with the unit closest to Manhattan Avenue identified as Unit 1 and Unit 2 behind that. Unit 1 is slightly larger at 3,084 square feet and Unit 2 at 3,000 square feet. Vehicular access to this site will be provided from the rear off of Palm Drive via a single nine-foot, two-inch-wide, long, shared driveway. This driveway will lead to two car garages, and this property also proposes two guest parking spaces rather than the minimum of one. Each unit will have a basement and two non-subterranean floors with decks off of both floors, and trees and landscaping will be provided for this site as well. Next slide. This table demonstrates how the project is fully compliant with the development standards within the R3 zone, including minimum lot area, height, lot coverage, open space, and parking. Next slide, please. This project exceeds the minimum of 300 square feet of open space per unit and will provide three trash bins per home. Next slide. Thank you. In addition to meeting the development standards within the R3 zone, the project is also compliant with the condominium standards, as shown in this slide, including a minimum unit size, minimum private storage space, and the required front yard setback. And next slide, please. Anticipated impacts from this project and the approval of the CUP, PDP, and tentative parcel map are shown. Expected impacts are transitory in nature and pertain to construction noise, dust, and vibrations. Approval of this project would result in the increase of housing and would provide ownership opportunities. Next slide, please. Thank you. Here you can see the proposed elevations of the west, as it fronts on Palm, the garage door, and on the east along Manhattan Avenue, and their renderings to display the architectural style. Next. Thank you. This slide provides a north elevation emphasizing the grade change of the site and compliance with the maximum building height, which is a maximum of 30 feet. Next, please. And here is our south elevation highlighting the view decks, taking advantage of the west-facing direction. Next slide. This is the proposed basement floor level plan for each unit. Both garages and both guest parking spaces are at this level, as well as the laundry area and elevators. Unit 2 is provided with a bedroom and attached bathroom and game room. Next slide. On the first floor of each unit lies the primary bedroom, suite, and bath, with Unit 1 having three additional bedrooms and baths, and Unit 2 providing two bedrooms and baths, such that each home has four bedrooms. At this level, there is also an elevator and a stairway leading to the second floor. We'll take a look at that second floor. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is the second floor of Unit 1, which accommodates the kitchen, great room, and a powder room, with that large west-facing deck accommodating the open space, an elevator and stairway. Next slide. This is a virtual mirror image, a similar floor plan found here on the second floor of Unit 2, also with the great room and bathroom, elevator and stairway, and a viewing deck. Next slide, please. As depicted in this roof plan, you can see the staggered decks below, but there are no, I'm sorry, this roof plan, but there are no roof decks proposed for this project, unlike some of our others. Next, please. So this project before you tonight has been thoroughly evaluated for conformance with the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code standards for conditional use permits, as identified in Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, Section 7. Next slide, please. As depicted in this roof plan, you can see the staggered decks below, but there are no, I'm sorry, this roof plan, but there are no roof decks proposed for this project, unlike some of our others. Next, please. So this project before you tonight has been thoroughly evaluated for conformance with the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code standards for conditional use permits, as identified in Hermosa Beach Municipal Code Section 175650, as well as our precise development plans in Section 175830, and our condo subdivisions as identified in Section 16.860. And it's discussed in greater detail on pages 4 through 12 of your staff report. Next slide. The project has also been evaluated for conformance with the city's general plan and was found to be consistent with, among several, Policy 2.3 of the land use element to promote a diverse range of housing units, types, and sizes within the allowed high density. And additionally, the project supports Policy 2.2 and 2.4, which encourage development of safe, sound, and decent housing, and to provide homeownership in the community. Next slide, please. And the project was further evaluated for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, which was determined to qualify for Class III categorical exemption under Section 15303 for new construction. Next slide. For public noticing of the project, 304 mailers were sent to property owners and renters within a 300-square-foot radius, as shown on this slide, on August 27, and a legal ad was published on September 4 in the Easy Reader. Furthermore, two public noticing posters were placed on the site a minimum of 10 days ahead of this public hearing, in accordance with Hermosa Beach Municipal Code 176850. And there has been no public comment on this project at the time of this presentation. Next slide, please. So this brings us to staff's recommendation. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2515, determining that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and approve Conditional Use Permit 2415, and Precise Development Plan 2418, as well as the tentative parcel map number 84662, to allow two new condominium buildings at 1011 Manhattan Avenue in the multifamily residential zone, subject to the conditions provided. Next slide. So this concludes staff's presentation. We also have the applicant with us tonight, if the commission has any further questions, and I'm also available to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions of staff at this time regarding the presentation?
No.
Okay. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any disclosures to make?
Side visit.
Side visit.
Side visit.
Side visit. Okay, we're now going to begin the public comment portion of the hearing. All questions and comments on this matter are to be directed to the commission, not to the audience. Is the applicant present? And if so, can you please approach the podium to make your presentation?
Good evening, Commissioner Hirsch and fellow commissioners. Thank you, one, for being available again second week in a row. I know this is a volunteer job, and we appreciate the robust agendas that you have before you, and appreciate you getting us heard, so we can have projects in our community continue. I am here on behalf of the applicant, who is in agreement with all the proposed conditions, and seeking your approval of the Precise Development Plan, Use Permit for Condominiums, and a tentative map for subdivision. Planner Tran gave a very comprehensive report. I don't want to repeat the items that she laid out regarding this project in very great detail. It is a project that is in the R3 zone. We can't fit three units here because of the size of the lot, but we do use the design standards for R3. As you heard this on the site, the residential development is over 100 years old, well past its useful life and time for redevelopment. Condominiums will allow for homeownership in the community, as well as significant funds for the community in plan check, permit fees, school fees. Additionally, we will have low-impact development, ensuring that the water is clarified before returning it to the city. We'll have Title 24 environmental components to the project, and all building codes, which are energy-efficient and safe for this project, and quite different from what exists now. In addition, there has been a question regarding the CCNRs. One benefit to having condominiums is that there are CCNRs that are recorded with the county after being reviewed by the city and are compliant with the city's municipal code, in that the CCNRs specify that garages, for instance, are to be used only for vehicular parking, not for storage, not for other recreational uses or other livable area. And that's a tremendous benefit to the city, because it brings all of our parking needs onto private property, and ensures that this project fully assumes the parking needs of its occupants and guests. And that'll be specified in the CCNRs. There's been another question regarding CCNRs and whether they can be changed, and I want to assure you that the city staff reviewed the CCNRs two times prior to being recorded with the county. And one of the provisions in the CCNRs indicates that, in addition to the provisions contained in this declaration, meaning the CCNRs, concerning amendment thereof, the provisions contained in this article should not be amended, modified, or changed without first obtaining the written consent of the city. So I hope that that addresses the question regarding can the CCNRs be changed? And the answer is no. Once these are approved by the city, they are recorded, and they may not be modified unless the city were to expressly give permission for that. The other thing I just wanted to highlight is, again, this is regarding parking, but this particular point I'd like to make is that parking for the public on Manhattan Avenue has been maintained. The architect took specific care at ensuring that no request for a curb cut on Manhattan Avenue was made, and has taken all access to the lot from the alley. So both units will access from the same place on Palm, and no curb cut has been requested, therefore maintaining public parking and access to the coast and to the city. So with that, I seek your approval tonight, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions of the applicant at this time?
No.
Okay. Then we will move on to see if there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this item. We will first address any comments in chambers and then move on to online comments. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item? Reminder that you have up to three minutes. Please approach your podium and state your name.
Christine Doslin, and I did receive the notice, and that's why I came, because I own the building directly across from where they're going to tear down that house and put up the condominium. Now, reading everything, it looks like everything's in order, so I don't really have an argument. I kind of wanted to see what it was going to look like, because I've had that building for like 40 or 50 years, but so, but you're telling me like the sidewalk is going to be plenty of room in the front, it's not going to cut off any sidewalk? And then when we talk about the 30 feet, so the 30 feet is going to be the very top of the building, it's not going to be like a recreation area on the top? That was a question.
Thank you for your questions. Just as a reminder, in the public comment portion, we can't directly respond, but we can certainly hear your feedback.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to speak on behalf of this item? Do we have any online comments?
One hand is raised. Anthony Higgins, you are unmuted.
Yeah, hello. Two very quick comments. First, exactly how is this CCNR for the garage, and its use for parking, or for cars only, going to be enforced? And the second is, what you just heard from the chairperson is not really factually accurate. The Brown Act does permit brief responses to questions from the participants. It does permit for you to briefly question the person, to ask clarifying questions. And so I wish the chairperson would stop spreading misinformation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other online comments?
No other hands are raised.
All right, then I will invite the applicant to come back if they have any responses to any of the public comments that were raised during this portion of the meeting.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you again. Regarding CCNRs and their requirement for vehicular parking, that's a civil matter between the property owners, but the city did review and approve a specific use of the garage, and the city may take action under their authority if they, if the use of the property is no longer being used the way it was approved. Regarding the continuous sidewalk adjacent to the property in the public right-of-way on Manhattan Avenue, all projects are required to have civil plans prepared, which includes a street improvement plan. So whenever we have over 400 square feet of new construction, we do prepare civil plans in compliance with the current code, which includes a huge priority of the city, which is four-foot continuous sidewalk that's ADA compliant. That's a big priority for another department in the city, which is Public Works, and that is under their purview. But that is a four-foot continuous sidewalk on Manhattan Avenue. Regarding recreational use on the top of the building, I can't specify any information on that. I would invite everyone, the public, to review the plans at the city, and they are code-compliant. Are they 30 feet? The city has an unusual way of determining height. It's called the interpolated grade. The staff has reviewed the plans numerous times, including all documentation, surveys prepared by a licensed surveyor, and as the project is in, is under construction, will include certification of the max height that's been approved during construction be submitted to the city.
Do we have any questions before we close the public comment?
I wonder if you could answer a few questions for me? The question was posed about a roof deck. Based on the plans I'm seeing, there is no roof deck.
Correct. Based on the plans that have been submitted that are before you, there is no roof deck.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Before we close the public comment portion of the meeting, do any of my fellow commissioners have further questions? No? Okay. You do have a question. Okay. I'll now close the public comment portion of this hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and deliberation. Vice Chair Izant, do you want to kick us off?
Thank you, Chair Hirsch. This applicant is not asking for any variances or any exceptions. It completely complies with all the city zoning standards. Consequently, I will support the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Flaherty?
Yes, I also support the project. It does increase our rena count. It removes all the encroachments that was at the old property. There's no street parking removal. It meets all the standards, heights, setbacks, et cetera. There's actually an extra parking spot onsite that's not required, but they're putting in. And there is no rooftop deck. So I support the project.
Thank you. Commissioner McNally?
Well, it's hard to see another classic craftsman cottage gone. I get emotional in these matters I care about. But the three findings by staff are well in order. The CEQA is taken care of. There is no reason that, there's been so many adjustments and additions to this property that it is appropriate to change and redevelop, and I'm inclined to support this.
Thank you. I agree with the perspective of my fellow commissioners. This seems like a very well-thought-out project that is in compliance with all of the local zoning codes. You know, so it is sad to see another craftsman go, but I intend to support the project. Do we have a motion?
Chair Hirsch, I move staff recommendation 25-15, which is a precise development plan, PDP 24-18, and that CUP 24-15, and that this project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Do we have a second? All right, it's been motioned and seconded. Can we have a vote? Motion is, voting is now open. Motion carries unanimously, noting Commissioner Hoffman absent. Thank you. All right, we're now going to move on to item number 7B for public hearing. This is the recommendation to approve Precise Development Plan, PDP 24-08, to allow a new 50.5-foot-tall five-unit apartment building at 3415 Palm Drive in the multifamily residential R3 zone, to comply with the Housing Accountability Act 25-CDD-082, Government Code Section 65589.5, conditioned on Coastal Commission approval of a coastal development permit. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jake Whitney, and I'll be delivering the presentation this evening for this item. Next slide, please. So the request before you, as stated in the agenda, is to allow a new 50.5-foot-tall five-unit apartment building at 3415 Palm Drive, and to determine that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Next slide, please. The project's site is an interior lot located on Hermosa Avenue, north of 34th Street, and the site has alley access via Palm Drive and is located in the multifamily residential R3 zone. The general plan designates the property for high-density residential uses, with a density range between 25.1 and 33 dwelling units per acre. It is also located within the coastal zone boundary. The existing 2,553-square-foot lot is currently developed with a four-unit apartment building permitted in 1956, and the site is currently developed at a density higher than is allowed under current standards, and is classified as legal non-conforming at 68.2 dwelling units per acre. The proposed five-unit project before the Planning Commission this evening would further increase this density to 85.3 dwelling units per acre. Now, while consistency with the general plan, and by extension, the zoning ordinance, is typically prohibited under city codes, the applicant has submitted their application for this project under California Government Code Section 65589.5, which is commonly referred to as the builder's remedy. Pursuant to the builder's remedy, a local jurisdiction cannot disapprove or condition approval in a manner that renders infeasible a housing development project for the use of low, very low, or moderate-income households unless it makes a written findings based on a preponderance of evidence in the record as to one of five exceptions. The five exceptions being that the housing element is in compliance, and the rena has been met and exceeded for all income categories. Two is that the project has specific adverse impacts upon public health or safety, and there is no feasible method to avoid method to avoid or mitigate this impact, and the impact must be based on objective, written, public health, or safety standards. Number three is that denial or imposition of the conditions on the project are required to comply with specific state and federal laws, and there are no other feasible methods to comply without making the development unaffordable. Four is that the project is zoned on land for agriculture, or is there inadequate water or sewer facilities to serve the project. Five is that the project is inconsistent with both the zoning and the general plan land use designation. However, a city cannot make this finding if it has not adopted a housing element in compliance with state law. Now, as mentioned, at the time of the application, the initial submittal of the initial submittal, the city's housing element was not in compliance, and the requirement to qualify for the builder's remedy meant setting aside 20% of the proposed units for lower-income households, and thus one unit of the five-unit development was proposed to be deed-restricted to lower-income households. However, the affordability criteria needed to qualify for a builder's remedy project was later modified by the state legislature, which we will detail momentarily. Next slide, please. On the slide above, planning staff have compiled the list of the sequence of events beginning with the applicant's preliminary application, all the way to where we find ourselves to the present day. On February 7 of 2024, the applicant submitted the preliminary application in accordance with the Housing Crisis Act of 2019 to demolish the existing four-unit building and construct a five-unit building with one affordable unit. On June 10 of 2024, the applicant filed for a precise development plan for a substantially similar project, and then on January 1 of this year, Assembly Bill 1893 took effect, which, among other things, revised the affordability criteria for certain builder's remedy projects, as well as amended the definition of housing for very low, low, or moderate-income households. This brings us to the current iteration of the project, where following the passage and the effective date of State Assembly Bill 1893, the applicant has revised the project on January 15 of 2025 to amend, to eliminate the proposed affordable unit and requests approval of a market rate development, as the project is no longer required to have a percentage of affordable units to qualify for the builder's remedy. Now, this were enabled by a series of few criteria. One is that the project contained 10 or fewer units and was located on a site smaller than one acre, that it was proposed at a density that exceeds 10 dwelling units per acre, and within this definition, it allows the project to be classified as a project for mixed-income households, which is now included in the state's definition of housing for very low, low, or moderate-income households. Lastly, the Planning Commission heard the first round of public hearing on this project on March 18 of 2025, and there were a series of additional questions that remained from the Commission regarding the impacts of the project, as well as from the public, which we will cover in greater detail a little bit later in the presentation. Next slide, please. Now, due to the fact that the project does qualify for the builder's remedy, the city is greatly limited in its ability to deny the project, as it provides housing for very low, low, and moderate-income households, as mentioned. And as such, the oversight of the Planning Commission for this particular project is limited to determining if there are any specific adverse impacts pertaining to public health or safety which may serve as grounds for denial. As used above, the specific adverse impact means a specific, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, written, public health or safety standards and policies that existed on the date that the application was deemed complete. An inconsistency with the zoning and general plan do not meet that standard. Next slide, please. Shown above is the city zoning map to provide additional context, showing the location of the property in relation to adjacent streets, as well as zoning districts and residences. Next slide, please. To do a little recap of the existing project, this is a 50.5-foot-tall, five-unit apartment building, and that measurement is done based on taking the highest point of the structure in relation to the interpolated grade, which connects the lowest property corner to the highest property corner point, as well as the demolition of the four-unit building that currently exists on the site and the four parking spaces that are there. Vehicular access to this site would be provided from Hermosa Avenue and Palm Drive, leading to two two-car garages, as well as three guest parking stalls. Next slide, please. As shown on the development standards chart above, the project is inconsistent with many of the development standards within the R3 Zone, such as height, lot coverage, open space, and parking. And this brings us to a series of questions that the Planning Commission had, as well as the public pertaining to these inconsistencies, which we will address next. Next slide, please. So among the items raised at the last Planning Commission meeting were if there were sufficient sewer capacity to accommodate the net increase of one residential unit, being that the project would go from four units to five. In response to this question, the city's Public Works Department has prepared a memorandum detailing the existing sewer capacity, serving the proposed project, and confirmed that the sewer capacity would be sufficient to accommodate the one extra unit, and that memorandum is located within your agenda packet this evening. As it pertains to solar, there was questions outstanding whether solar access rights would be impacted for adjacent property owners and what those effects would be, to which staff did an analysis on the Solar Rights Act of 1978, and found that while it provides limited protection for photovoltaic installations from shade and vegetation in certain circumstances, it is a narrow protection that does not extend to shade created from new or existing buildings. The Act also permits for the voluntary establishment of solar easements between private property owners, although it was found that it does not mandate their creation. No solar easements were found to exist on the subject property, and the applicant also further prepared a shadow study to demonstrate where shadows would be cast on, at varying times of day during different seasons, and those diagrams may be found attached to your agenda packet as well. Furthermore, an intrusion on a solar right would also not be sufficient to meet the specific adverse impacts on public health and safety, as public welfare is not considered a specific adverse impact under the builder's remedy. Pertaining to the height of the adjacent buildings, can we pull up the next slide? The outstanding question here was how the project compares in height to some of its neighbors. So as it pertains to the adjacent property at 3410 Hermosa Avenue, would be about 5.25 feet taller, and the applicant has provided the city with the west-facing diagram on Hermosa Avenue illustrating the building in relation to adjacent structures to provide the community with further context. The adjacent building at 3410 Hermosa Avenue measures approximately 48.5 feet as viewed from Hermosa Avenue, and meanwhile, the 3415 Palm proposal would measure 53.75 from Hermosa Avenue, although it is important to note that this does not represent the city's official methods of measuring height, as that is done from the interpolated grade line. For additional details on how the city measures height, I'd refer the public to Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, Section 17.4615 for details. Regarding scenic vistas, one of the outstanding questions were what the impacts would be on any public views, and based on the analysis, there were not evidence that it would obstruct a public view, but if such evidence were to be there, it would not be rise to the threshold for making specific adverse impacts findings, as it does not pertain to health or safety impacts. However, for reference purposes, the City of Hermosa Beach General Plan does have a list of, or a diagram of designated prominent public viewpoints, as illustrated in Figure 5.2, Page 167 of Plan Hermosa, and that has been included within the agenda packet as well. According to Plan Hermosa, the closest public viewpoint is the extreme northwest corner of the city and is flanked at the right-of-way, at the intersection of Hermosa and 35th Street, and this viewpoint is described to be framed with urban development on both sides of the corridor, according to the Plan Hermosa EIR. And the project would not obstruct the public view as is located on private property and not abutting the public right-of-way. Furthermore, it is important to note that the city does not have existing private view protections in place. Concerning the LA County Fire response, we did reach out to LA County Fire to weigh in on whether they would be sufficiently able to serve the site in the case of an emergency fire event, and they provided us with some supplemental correspondence regarding the department's ability to provide adequate resources in the case of an emergency event. The applicant also submitted the project for review for the LA County Fire Department Land Development Unit and was cleared to proceed to public hearing. Additional approval would also be required from the LA County Fire Engineering Unit if the project is approved, and they also have provided three additional conditions for the project, and that those have been incorporated in the draft resolution before you this evening. Next slide, please. Next slide. So this brings us to the staff analysis. While staff do find that some of the precise development, the precise development plan findings can be made, the proposed project remains inconsistent with a variety of zoning and general plan standards, such as max lot coverage, the height, the density, the lot area per dwelling unit, parking, and open space standards. However, these inconsistencies do not rise to that threshold needed to deny the project, as the project is eligible for protections under the builder's remedy within the Housing Accountability Act, as it meets the state statute definition for providing housing for very low, low, or moderate-income households pursuant to Government Code 65589.5 subdivision D. Furthermore, staff does not believe at this time that there are public health and safety reasons, as defined by state statute, for the denial of the project. Next slide, please. This brings us to SEQA compliance. The project was evaluated for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, and we determined that it qualified for a Class III categorical exemption for new construction, as defined in Section 15303 of the SEQA guidelines, as this project consists of a multifamily residential project, less than six units within an urbanized area. Now, Section 15300.2 of the SEQA guidelines lists a series of exceptions to the exemption, and these exceptions define circumstances that could override or negate the city's ability to use a categorical exemption. And among these exceptions are that the project be located in a sensitive environment, such as the project may impact an officially mapped or designated environmental resource of hazardous or critical concern. The cumulative effect of successive projects of the same type in the same place over time may be significant. The project may have a significant environmental impact due to unusual circumstances. The project may damage scenic resources, such as trees, historic buildings, or rock outcroppings within an official state scenic highway. One could be that the project is located on a hazardous waste site, or that the project may cause substantial adverse change in the significance of a historic resource. Regarding the historic resource assessment, an assessment was prepared by Kaplan Shen Kaplan on May 16 of 2024, and found that the existing development was not considered a historical resource. Further, staff does not believe any of the listed exceptions to the exemptions apply, as the project does not result in a significant cumulative impact of successive projects of the same type in the same place over time, nor do they have a significant effect on the environment due to unusual circumstances, or damage a scenic highway or scenic resources within a state scenic highway, as no scenic highways exist within the vicinity of the project. Next slide, please. For public noticing of this project, a total of 203 public noticing notifications were mailed to the applicant, occupants, and property owners within a 300-foot radius on August 27 of 2025. Further, a legal ad was published on September 4, 2025, in the Easy Reader, and the applicant received a notice poster to post onsite within a minimum of 10 days in advance of the public hearing, in accordance with Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, Section 17.68.50, pertaining to public noticing. Planning staff have also received numerous written public comments regarding this project. Most comments are in opposition, and they are provided within the agenda packet, included for reference purposes. Next slide, please. Lastly, this brings us to the staff recommendation. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving precise development plan 24-8 for the new five-unit apartment building at 3415 Palm Drive for legal compliance, subject to a series of conditions. Next slide, please. This brings us to the conclusion of the staff presentation. We are available to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also in the chambers this evening to answer further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move to questions of staff, I see definitely a lot of familiar faces in the audience and some new ones, so I just want to make sure that the public is aware of the order of operations. So we just heard the staff report. The Commission will ask any questions we have of staff regarding the staff report. Then the applicant is invited to make a presentation, if they have one. We will ask the applicant questions on their presentation, and then we will open it up for public comment to those in chambers and those online. After that, the applicant is invited to respond to any of those comments, and then we will bring it back to the Commission for deliberation. So just wanted to make sure that everyone was clear on how we will run the items going forward as we talk about this. So with that, do any of my fellow commissioners have questions of staff? Vice Chair Izant?
Thank you, Chair Hirsch. I believe this question is most appropriately directed towards counsel. So the question that may influence public testimony yet to be heard is whether or not the Commission has the legal right to address, if the applicant presents it, an alternative plan. Now, I note that within our packet, which has been available to the public since Thursday, there's a letter from August 11 that indicates that the applicant may, at this particular event, present an alternative design. We also have available, at least to the Commission, as of yesterday, a subsequent letter that is more specific, and it says that the, with this particular letter, if the Commission would be preferable to considering the project alternative, that they would be open for that as well. So that's a long-winded question to, does the Commission, if they so desire this evening, have the legal authority and right to consider the alternative plan and to either still clearly under builder's remedy, either accept or reject it?
Thank you for the question, Vice Chair. Yes, so as Jake noted, we have the project applicant here tonight. We anticipate that they will be prepared to make a presentation on the project alternative. That's our understanding, and at that time, the Commission is welcome, of course, to ask questions about the presentation and the project alternative. And if the Commission does find that to be more favorable at that point, it can ask the applicant, which the applicant has already indicated, that they will be willing to accept the project alternative before you tonight. At that point, the Commission is welcome to just confirm that with the applicant, and assuming that the applicant indeed consents, as they already have in writing a couple of times, or at least indicated that they would, then the Commission is free to condition the approval of the project on compliance with the project alternative, which was submitted, again, to the Commission yesterday on the 15th. I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you. No further questions, Chair Hirsch.
Okay. Commissioner Flaherty, any questions of staff?
Yes, rather mundane, but Jake, you did a great job on all this package over the last couple of months. One of the questions is- One of the questions is, has any application ever been considered for a convex lot?
For this particular site?
Yes.
We have not received an application for a convex lot determination.
Some of the responses from the fire department I thought were, could be expanded, but one of them is, they requested that this project, regardless of where we go with it, be readdressed on Hermosa Avenue versus Palm, for obvious reasons. They need correct addresses to get to a site. Has that been a part of the condition that you would apply?
So we have incorporated all the fire department's conditions within the proposed resolution.
Okay. And any of the fire department correspondence, I didn't see anything on timeframes. They only mentioned where their trucks were located and our existing relationship with Manhattan Redondo. Did, did any of those letters, did you see any timeframes on their response time?
They did not provide, to my recollection, detailed response on response times. The substance of their communications to us was regarding mutual aid agreements with adjacent jurisdictions and how they would have the necessary equipment in order to service a fire at the current proposed height.
Okay. The Public Works question on the sewer, one of the questions I read on an email, are you conditioning this project, in whatever form, to be, have sewer access on Hermosa only?
We are not, in this current iteration, conditioning the sewer connection. The extent to which we've deliberated with the Public Works Division was to ensure that there are sufficient capacity on those lines that would service the property. We don't have a specific tailored language on where that connection would need to occur.
Are any of the designs showing any of that right now that you have in front of you?
I'm not able to speak to that degree regarding sewer connection.
If I might add, I did have prior conversations with Public Works staff that Jake may not be aware of, but they did, in fact, indicate that the line was on Hermosa, and that is not impacted, and that's where they will be tying into.
The shadowing, I've been on the commission since 2010. It's the first time I've ever seen a shadowing document on a residential area. I thought we did something on a hotel one time, but it was, to me, there was no verbiage to it. It was just pictures and so on and so forth. If indeed we'd go with an alternative, well, I can't say that yet, do you expect more out of a shadowing document? It was paid for by the applicant, I assume.
The applicant voluntarily provided us with these requested materials. I would have to defer to the applicant to gauge their willingness on supplying that documentation and any proposed alternative.
Okay. Is there any history in the city where we had a shadowing document that we reviewed at your level?
Within my time with the city, we have not had prior projects do this similar sort of shadow analysis. I would defer to either any department head for time predating me, but it is certainly not a common requirement.
Most of my other, is there a point in time, there's 18 different attachments, and on top of that, we received from, prior to our meeting in March, what would you say the number of letters, emails, et cetera, exceeds, comes close to 150 documents?
In terms of, I believe we had, at last checking, somewhere in the ballpark of 110-ish pages of public comment, give or take, overwhelmingly in opposition to the project. I don't recall the exact number of public comments off the top of my head.
Most of my other, Madam Chair, most of my other questions are based on as we move through this process, so I would like to defer those questions later on.
Great.
Thank you.
Commissioner McNally?
Jake, the work you guys have done is amazing. I appreciate your support in helping me understand this difficult situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Clarification, Jake, I thought I heard in the presentation that you mentioned that there is still an affordable unit contemplated in the current design. I want to clarify, because the staff report says that that has since been removed. Can you clarify?
Right. So when the application initially was submitted to staff, the requirement to proceed under the builder's remedy is that 20% of the units would have been needed to be deed restricted for very low, low, or moderate income households. The state later passed an assembly bill which revised the affordability criteria, and it exempted certain projects meeting key criteria from those affordability requirements. So once the state passed that legislation, the applicant revised their application to eliminate the proposed affordable unit, and so the current iteration would be five market-rate projects, no deed-restricted units.
Thank you. And then, just to kind of piggyback on Commissioner Flaherty's question about the shade, shadow study, that seems to be diagrammatic in nature. I would have, I was assuming that there would be findings or something along the lines of, you know, this is an exorbitant amount of shade or shadow that is cast on these other properties, or something that gives us perspective in terms of what we're looking at. So I'd guess, just for staff, can you provide any insight or feedback into things that you have seen in the past? And Jake, I know that's not you, because you haven't seen any of them, but in terms of what we were expecting, and does this satisfy that? Because I guess I, as a commissioner, am not really sure what to do with, what was presented.
So, thank you for the question. So in general, a shade and shadow study does start with this kind of diagrammatic illustration, and then it does look at seasonal periods as the sun shifts. We would expect, and we did, in fact, ask the applicant for a narrative to accompany this, but the applicant provided what they provided, which was simply this diagrammatic illustration. In general, shade and shadow, when you are, in other instances, cities have established thresholds that they've adopted, and somewhere in the realm of three to four hours of light being obstructed, can, in some situations, be significant.
Thank you. Last question for staff, and I will open it to anyone who wants to answer. In terms of process, so we have heard this back in March, we are now hearing it again. The project hasn't changed, although we might see a different iteration with the applicant's presentation, and Planning Commission is asked, being asked to take action tonight. I understand that this also has to go to Coastal Commission, so can you please just explain to us, you know, we're working under the understanding that this is a builder's remedy project within the city of Hermosa Beach, and, you know, we are working within certain confines based on it being builder's remedy. How does the Coastal Commission view this? How does their review and approvals process layer into this process that we are going through tonight?
Thank you, Chair Hirsch. I'll go ahead and take that question. So the project will require coastal development permit because it was, is within the city's coastal zone. That process goes through the Coastal Commission, which is a state body. It's not part of our city review. So as far as process, assuming that the city approves the project or some iteration of the project, the applicant would then go to the Coastal Commission with an application for a CDP, the coastal development permit. At that point, Coastal would look to assess the project against its own criteria for CDPs, which are separate from the city's criteria as far as what's applicable in our municipal code and under state law, such as the Building Code, et cetera, that we have adopted. And they're also going to look specifically to compliance with the State California Coastal Act and the city's local coastal land use plan. As you mentioned, whether or not the state or the Coastal Commission is subject to the builder's remedy. The answer to that is no. The builder's remedy is a function of state law that applies to local authorities, like cities and counties. It does not apply to state boards and state authorities like the Coastal Commission. So the Coastal Commission will not be bound by the same criteria that the city is reviewing tonight under the builder's remedy. We expect that the Coastal Commission will assess whether the project conforms with local zoning regulations as part of the city's local coastal land use plan. We expect that they may have some of the similar concerns that we have raised in our staff presentation, that the public has raised in their public comments. Ultimately, the ball will be in Coastal's court at that point if they are assessing the project for their coastal development permit. So that's kind of an overview of how those two processes work, and I do want to underscore that even if the city approves a version of this project, if the Coastal Commission does not grant a coastal development permit, then the project cannot move forward, because both are required under state law, state and local law. And we would ask today, the resolution is drafted to condition approval of the project, again, whatever version that is, on the applicant receiving a CDP. So they both have to be obtained by the applicant in order for development to commence. I hope they answered your question, and more clarification.
It does, but it also triggered another question. Let's say we approve some version tonight, and it goes to Coastal Commission. Does Coastal Commission ever undermine the conditions of approval set in place by a planning commission, do, make it less restrictive?
My understanding is... And what happens? Right, right. So, no. These two approvals are separate, but they also have to work together. So the state Coastal Commission is not in a position to overturn the city's conditions of approval. That would not be the appropriate process by which to challenge those conditions. The state can impose their own conditions. The state will look to the approval that the city granted, and will look to our conditions of approval to make sure that whatever the state approves is consistent with, again, our local requirements and with the approval that the city granted. And I also want to underscore, of course, that all of our conditions of approval drafted tonight are consistent with the city's regulations. So they work, again, separately but together, and ultimately, the more restrictive condition between the two permits or two approvals will control the project. So if Coastal comes back with a condition that's actually more restrictive than what the city may have imposed, the project will be required to comply by the most restrictive condition.
Thank you. That's it for my questions. Any other questions of staff? Okay. All right, well then, we'll move to the public comment portion period of the meeting. If the applicant is present, you may please approach the podium, and if you have a presentation, we'd like to see it.
Chair Hirsch, members of the commission, good evening. My name is Michael Shauna felt. I'm land use counsel for the Ferraros, the applicants for the project before you, item 7B. We appreciate the work of staff since August, since before August, the assiduous work of staff in getting a very thorough staff report together and laying out some fairly complicated state housing laws and how they apply to this project. When this matter first came before this commission in August, the Ferraros listened to the comments, the concerns of the community. They took it under submission. They took the comments seriously. Those comments coalesced around two major issues that they could address, and that was height, and that was unit count. Some have asked why it's taken so long to get back here after, since March, because the Ferraros commissioned an architect to really look at this very hard, to find out if they could do something to address those two issues. And that's no small expense. The Ferraros are not a big corporation developer, they're not, and so they took their time to do this right, and they considered it very carefully. There was an earlier conceptual submittal that's in the staff report. I got my letter into this commission yesterday with a more refined version of the alternative that we have presented. We understand that before the commission is the project in the staff report. We are presenting the product of hard work of the Ferraros with a different version, which falls well underneath the impact envelope that you've studied thus far in the CEQA exemption analysis and in your staff report. It brings the project down in height from 50.5 feet that you saw with the interpolated grade to 35.27 feet, and that's a significant reduction in height. It also drops a unit, so this goes from five to four units now, which keeps the baseline condition in place of what's currently there and has been there since 1956, four units. Four units and a density that will remain to be the same as the current condition, 68.2 dwelling units per acre, and that's a reduction from the earlier version that was presented in the staff report. So that's a significant, I think, effort to try to address community concerns. We have something that really maintains much closer to what the baseline's been for 69 That current building that we see at this site was built in 1956. It's a bit rundown. You could not renovate that project. It needed to be renovated, but you couldn't renovate that without getting completely dislodged from your illegal non-conforming use. You would have to comply to the current code. That would mean that whatever you put in there, if you didn't have the builder's remedy, would be one unit. So you'd go from four, which have been there for 69 years, to one in order to hew to the current density requirement without the builder's remedy. The builder's remedy was an interim remedy that was in place from the time that the general plan housing element was first out of compliance in October 2021 till August 2024, when it was finally certified as compliant. And towards the end of that long period of time, the Ferraros came in with a builder's remedy project. I've seen many builder's remedy projects, okay? This is one of the most responsible that I've seen, even the proposed project, but certainly the alternative. It's, there's been a real good faith effort to try to address these issues. Anything smaller, anything with fewer units, anything that comes down even lower would render this project infeasible. And under the Housing Accountability Act, which we heard Jake talk about, you know, you cannot condition a builder's remedy or Housing Accountability Act project with any condition of approval that would render it infeasible. So we ask, and we are willing to, accept a condition of approval in this matter before you now that would, that would basically approve the project as presented in my letter yesterday. So I think that addresses many of the concerns. I also wanted to say that it keeps the units in place. If this project were built per code today and dropping three units, the state would not allow that. The state housing replacement laws under Government Code 66300 require no net loss. So even under the current zoning, if that were rehabilitated, that site, you would lose those units, and that would be contrary and in violation of state law, which requires you to keep the units in place that you have. So that's what we have. It's certainly a very thoughtful project. It is going to enhance the aesthetics of this area. It's going to replace a dilapidated structure with a new structure that's thoughtfully designed architecturally and aesthetically, and it will keep this city in compliance with its no-net-loss requirements on unit count. I have a... I have a slide presentation, which I hope you guys can queue up. But before that happens, we talked about, staff presented this, the standards for denying a project like this, specific adverse impact to the public health and safety. That's not just for this project. That's for any project, like the one on item 7A as well. That's the Housing Accountability Act standards apply to any project that's consistent with the zoning code and the general plan. It also applies to builder's remedy projects. And builder's remedy is a special section inside that same statute of the Housing Accountability Act that only applied to jurisdictions that didn't get their housing element certified. In that window of time, there was the ability for developers to come in and bring in projects that were not necessarily consistent with zoning code and development standards, but that presented housing units. And this is in keeping with the state legislature's rather acute declaration that the state of California is in a housing emergency right now. That housing emergency is a legislative declaration. It'll be in place until the year 2030, although these declarations go back to 1969. This state has always had a chronic housing shortage. Only lately did the legislature really try to step it up and try to put teeth to some of these statutes to make sure they worked because it didn't appear to be working over the past 55 years. So it's an interim remedy. A lot of these laws will sunset in the year 2030. The builder's remedy is already sunsetted for this city as of the time you certified your housing element. This is not going to open a parade of horribles or some sort of cascading impacts from other builder's remedy projects because that window has shut. What you have is a very thoughtful one, extremely responsible, trying to maintain the baseline, especially in the, under the alternative we present to you now. And if you take a look at the screen, my slides are up. We have a study of the project there. And if you could just advance the slides. This is the current structure I talked about. It's, certainly could use some renovation. As I said, you can't renovate it. It would have to mean bringing this to code if we didn't have a builder's remedy. But with the builder's remedy, we can, and we can maintain the same number of units. So please advance. Okay, so this kind of compares the existing and the proposed. And I'm talking right now about all the alternative that we've presented yesterday. The number of units is going to maintain the same. We're not increasing under the alternative. The sizes do change. I think this renders them more in keeping with the current standards for a housing unit larger than the small units we had before. Parking spaces will remain the same. Everything else will be brought to code, to building code, because what we have right now is not compliant with the building code. And what you're going to have is a safer, more aesthetically pleasing development at the end of the day here. Next slide, please. What we see here is a elevation that would compare the alternative to the existing conditions. The neighbor, as you can see to the right in this picture, is now the higher elevation or the higher height. This project alternative design will come in around 30, just a shade over 30 feet. And you can see that that fits nicely within the existing conditions there. And also, if you look around this neighborhood, you're going to see many, many buildings that look like this at this height and some that exceed, like the neighbor over to the right here. So it's in keeping with the character of this community. Next slide. Here we have, in dark, and bold outline, the existing building. And you can see in the, in the backdrop shaded in blue, the proposed alternative. And you can see the, basically the city's code, how it defines the height at 30 feet here, 30-foot height limit and where, how it hews to that, how, you know, at least comes close to it. Next slide, please. So reduced height in this alternative, same unit count, baseline will be the same on that front. Baseline density will maintain, will be maintained from what it was since 1956. We've got, because of the reduction in height, there are no impacts to any public views. There are no impacts from the baseline right now from views looking towards the ocean with this height limit decrease. As I said before, this is not increasing the number of units and it allows the city to maintain compliance with state law for no net loss. And as I said in the last bullet here, number four, and said earlier in my presentation, that the alternative version has the same number of stories as other buildings in the neighborhood. This integrates with the existing conditions of the community. Next slide, please. Is that it? Okay. I didn't want to get too much into the law because I think you guys have heard a lot about the law. The builder's remedy is something that we may or may not agree with. You know, I see the debate between state legislature's housing laws and home rule. And they, I've seen that debate occur. That debate's already happened in the legislature and these are the laws we have. They're intended to address a large problem. But with this applicant, you're seeing a very responsible, sincere effort to do it in a way that's not steamrolling the city, that's not steamrolling the community. It's keeping as close as it can be to something that's feasible for them, but also mindful of the community's concerns. And I think that this is the best kind of builder's remedy project this city could ever really get to look at. And again, as I said, I've seen many of these projects. So I appreciate you and your time. I appreciate your volunteer time. This is a lot that you have to dedicate to this. I hope that you take a look at this with an open mind and mindful, of course, of what you, your obligations, of course, under state law, which I'm not here to harp on. But I'm here to answer questions. And if you need more information, we're here as well. Rebuttal if necessary, but I'm here. Thank you.
Thanks. Do we have any questions for the applicant at this time? None? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. We're now going to move on to public comment portion of the meeting. And before we jump into it, I just want to acknowledge all of the comment letters that we've received in advance of this hearing. I think we recorded at over 100 individual responses. If you have submitted comments in writing in advance and have also submitted a public comment card tonight, you know, we see a lot of people in the chambers. I'm sure we have a handful of people online, just to be respected, respectful of everyone's time and ability to speak their opinion. We just consider limiting your verbal remarks to issues that you have not already previously addressed in writing. We have reviewed every single online comment on behalf of all the commissioners. So we're very aware of, you know, the public's position. So with that, I will ask staff, how many comment cards do we have in chambers and how many, do we know how many people online would like to speak?
We received, so everybody that submitted a speaker card is up on the screen and they're in the order in which they'll be called. And we're still receiving a couple, so the count is ongoing. In terms of Zoom, we have at this moment just one virtual hand raised. So that may change as public comment progresses.
Okay. So just in terms of logistics, we will take public comment in order that it is on this screen up here. And due to the volume of public comments, we ask that if you are up next or after that, if you guys can just start queuing in line so that we can run through these public comments and hear everyone's voices. So with that, I will ask Betty Lou Bender to kick it off. Would you mind coming to the microphone, just because we have to let everyone online and tuning in to be able to hear your comment? Yes, and please state your name.
Betty Lou Bender. And I'm not opposed anymore. My opposition was based on the over 50-foot building and it was very disturbing. And I'm just thrilled with the changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Jung?
I'm Brian Jung. I live right next door to the proposed project. I'm opposed to the 50-foot tall building. It's, would be like twice as tall as our house and we'd be probably in the shade almost all year. I think there's also a problem with parking. With the, they probably have seven spaces, but they probably need a valet to get everybody in and out of their spots. The other thing is the fire issue. I think one of the reports indicated that they would need, among other things, two hook and ladder trucks to address a fire at a 50-foot tall building, which would mean you'd probably need one on Hermosa Avenue and one on Palm Drive. Our garage is on Palm Drive, so very familiar with access to Palm Drive. And I can tell you, from 34th Street, you'd never be able to get a hook and ladder on Palm Drive. It's very narrow. When there are cars parked on both sides of the street, there's barely enough room for a car to go up and down the street. And then Palm Drive is narrow, so there's no way they would be able to make that turn. The other access point would be 35th Street, which is a little bit wider. Again, with cars parked there, I think they would have a hard time getting a hook and ladder on the Palm Drive. I think trying to go from 35th to Palm Drive is kind of similar to going from Hermosa Avenue to 35th. And I can't, can't keep track of how many trucks and buses have been stuck at that corner because there just wasn't enough room to get around. And that's about it.
My name is Anna Jung. I'm, can I speak while he's still here?
Sure. Can we move her up in the list?
My name is Anna Jung. We both live next to, in the two and a half store, tall store, two and a half tall house to the north of the proposed building. And it dwarfs, that proposed 50-story building dwarfs our two and a half story house. It blocks our safety. It blocks our view. Anyway, I just, we disapprove of the 50-story building. It has all kinds of problems. Fire hazard, blocking views, blocking sunlight, worsening traffic, neighborhood parking. And anyway, so, but, but I would approve, I hope city approves the alternative, which, which would solve all, which would eliminate some of those problems. And then we, we want to thank all the people who are showing up to support, or support the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Alka Warner?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Alka Warner. And let me begin by saying that I know the Ferraros, the owners of this property, have invested a lot of time, energy, and money into this project. I'm probably the last person they want to hear from since I launched the Save Hermosa campaign to oppose the 50-foot plan. I'm sure they never expected to stir up so much anger, fear, and division in the community. But Hermosa isn't just another beach city. It's a tight-knit community where neighbors watch out for each other. We all share a love for our small-town character, our ocean views, our sunlight, and yes, our 30-foot height limit. Many of us thought the original plan was way too tall. When the applicant came back with a scaled-down version, it was a step in the right direction. If that was their way of listening to the community, I thank them. I urge the planning commission to approve this new design. It's far more in line with the character of the neighborhood. I know you will find a solution that works for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Hamilton?
Yes, good evening. I submitted in writing our views on the 50-foot proposed structure, which we clearly oppose. And obviously, we're now looking at a horse of a different color, I would say, from Texas where I was raised. And that's a very different situation. I'm very pleased to hear about that progress and the willingness of the applicant to substantially respond to the concerns of the neighborhood. I haven't had a chance to study it, but it certainly sounds vastly better. And so that's all I have to say.
Rory?
Kind of confused now about which plan we're talking about. So I'm like, I want to thank the Ferraros if, if this will be accepted by the commission because they were listening to the neighborhood and we applaud that. But if we have to speak to the matter at hand, the 50-foot, I'd like to say a couple of things. Yes, public corridors such as on Homer will be obscured, as well as significantly destroying home values because personal residents will lose their views too. Views which were guaranteed over 30 feet. Height limitations were put in place for a reason, so that a few tall structures, as shown tonight, like 3410, could never be built again. They were not to be emulated, but to be rejected. The shade diagrams aren't a proper study. There was no narrative. But it does appear that the impact from the project will greatly affect the Youngs' property directly to the north, which will strip away all of their sunlight. It will not only destroy their green space with its living organisms, but more importantly, it will negatively affect their physical and mental health. The LA County Fire Letter is just stating what it has, but it doesn't address the concerns with regard to the property, the response times, for example, their access to the alley, turning radius. If the applicant heard, which they did, we're told tonight, the concerns of the citizens of Hermosa, then why can't we be presented with just that alternative plan tonight? And I'm going to address this to you and to city council. Sometimes there's no case law for your exact situation, and sometimes there is. But if there isn't, where would we be without precedent-setting cases, establishing first-case law, such as Brown versus the Board of Education, or Miranda versus Arizona, or Marbury versus Madison? Why don't you just set a precedent here if there's no case law? Fight for what's right. Do you want your legacy to be that the planning commission and city council in 2025 destroyed the city of Hermosa or preserved it?
Thank you.
John Stickler, 133 34th Street. And I couldn't be more delighted, Mr. Ferraro, that you, I welcome you to our community and to our neighborhood, to 34th Street. We really do. And I'm looking to get old with you and enjoy a lot of barbecues up on the deck. You know, really, thank you very much. And I know on behalf of Barbara behind me and beautiful people Barbara and John in front of us and Richard, okay? We're going to enjoy it. Maybe we'll go surfing together, okay? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Brian Toomey, we live at 3419 Manhattan Avenue. I'm going to repeat what Rory said. I'm confused. Are we taking away the 50-foot and offering the 30 at this point? I don't understand. Is that what we're doing? I can just sit here like an idiot, I guess. So I'm still confused and I continue to be confused, but here's what I'll say. I've lived in Hermosa since 2003. I've lived in Hermosa since 2003, been a homeowner since 2010. And I don't know how we got into the S show with the oil years ago. But in the end, we did the right thing, and we wrote a check, and they went away. And hopefully, the right thing's happening already, and they're dropping from 50 to 30. And if they do that, build, build, build. Don't care. But another 50-foot building on the Hermosa coast does not belong. Everyone sitting here knows it doesn't belong. Someone screwed up along the way, and here we are today. I hope what I heard is that we're taking away the 50-foot and we're going to 30? And if that's the case, let's go. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we just pause, and can staff just clarify what we're reviewing and what's been presented so that the public knows how to address their comments?
So the applicant has presented an alternative concept for the Planning Commission to consider. So at this point, the applicant has indicated that they are fielding the 35-foot-for-unit alternative.
So that's not smoke and mirrors. That's a new plan?
The Planning Commission, the...
Right. Is 50 feet, are we done talking about that? That's what everyone wants to know?
Yeah.
So the Planning Commission, as the city attorney mentioned earlier, the Planning Commission does have the authority and discretion to condition an approval for this project consistent with the revised proposal that was presented.
Awesome. Don't screw it up.
Richard Am.
I don't know how I can follow that one, but at any rate, my name is Rick Meglia. My wife Shirley's in the audience. We live at 12334th Street, directly across from the Palm Alley from the applicant. We were obviously very opposed to the 50-foot structure, but given the fact that we're looking at this new structure, we don't oppose it and we'll support it.
Eric Horn.
Good evening. I speak to urge you to accept the alternative proposed design by the applicant. I think that this represents a thoughtful compromise. I know that there are still some voices in the community that are dismayed that this is still above the height limit at 35 feet and does not comply with every single element of the general plan. But we are where we are. I wish that we were not put in this position to have to approve a project under builder's remedy. And I also wish that the units that we are losing, which are smaller units and square footage and will command lower rents, were being replaced with units that might make decent homes for, you know, lower and middle-income people to live in. But we are where we are, and I urge the Commission to approve the alternative design of this project. Thank you.
Carolyn Petty. So I also encourage the Commission to approve the alternative plan. It would have been good for the community if the staff report had explained what the option was in terms of the alternative plan. And I'm saying this so staff in the future knows that clear staff reports help the community when they provide comment. There was many questions circulating around because people did not know. I want to thank the Ferraros for being good neighbors. Part of what makes our town great is that people care about other people, and they're demonstrating here that they do care. They were hamstrung by what the state of California mandates are in terms of no net loss, as the attorney was talking about. But they heard, they care, and I just want to reiterate, I appreciate it, and I think other people appreciate it. So again, please approve the alternative plan.
Thank you.
My name is Andre Sharp. I live on 6th Street, nowhere near the property. The thing that I want to address is twofold. The original presentation by Jake, nicely done, by the way, indicates that under the builder's remedy, this was pure theater because you have limited approval or disapproval on a project like that. So, you know, I don't know what the purpose of the meeting was, but now with the alternative, that makes it so much more palatable. The second thing is if you approve anything over the 30-foot limit, make sure you understand that this sets a precedent. Because the next person that comes up with something 50 feet are not going to be able to say, well, you approved that one, therefore you should approve the next one. Keep that in mind, please. Thank you.
Gary Brown. I echo what the gentleman just said. Precedent is important. If we, we spend a lot of time here with the people that are submitting their plans of not submitting them to be completed to our code, but something different. You can't keep making exceptions because you're going to get exceptions the next time, and you've set a precedent. I don't think we can set a precedent. They've spent a lot of time and a lot of money trying to deviate from what is a simple project. Build the thing to 30-feet level and then do what you need to do. I am one. I came here in 1971 in Hermosa Beach. I built two houses here in Hermosa Beach. It's very easy to submit plans that are required by the city of meeting certain requirements rather than bucking the system. I don't think you can buck the system. Because, and this builder's remedy is nothing but, you better get your lawyers together because the builder's remedy is a weak, and it's a punishing proposition. It's meant to punish people because you're not complying. We live in a very tight-knit community. We have one of the densest populations in the whole country, for God's sakes. I'm sorry if we can't squeeze in another 20 or 30 people at underpriced rentals. You can't do it. It is what it is. And again, I think we can't be making exceptions. You could just as easily met the 30-foot limit and be done with it. And as far as going over the limit, if you have to, you're going to require...
Could you please speak into the mic?
If you're going to require that the fire department provide another truck, well, what's going to happen if they, unfortunately, they do have a fire, and the truck is out someplace else, and then all the houses burned down in the neighborhood? Who's going to get the lawsuit for that one? If you can't get a truck with the right kind of ladder, and I'm assuming that the fire department was instrumental in all of the codes that they have. They made the 30-foot code because they can deal with the 30-foot code if there was a disaster, and they can get their ladders up. Having to borrow a ladder from someplace else is not the answer. I'm sorry. Thank you.
My name is Alyssa Brennan. I live at 1929 Manhattan Avenue here in Hermosa Beach. I understand that you guys are in a very difficult position with this project approval and what you are mandated by, by the state, but I'd like to give you some food for thought, even though there has been an alternative proposed that everybody in the room seems much happier with. Under the reasons to deny or condition a project, a city can deny it if it would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety. I would like to propose and give you food for thought that the mental health of not only the very nearby community like the Jungs to this property would be severely impacted by any approval of a project over our established 30-foot height limit. I have had sleepless nights worrying about my property value diminishing drastically if a precedent such as this is adopted. I have lost sleep because the lot in front of me recently went up for sale. And even if a project was built at 34 and 1/2 feet in front of me versus 30, it would severely decrease my property value. Property value that I am depending on for my retirement, as I'm sure the Jungs are and countless others in the entire city. If you approve this project at all over 30 feet, I think that it's worthwhile to do a mental health impact study on what is going to happen to everybody that has sleepless nights worrying over the investments that they have made and their safety and their security of their financial positions. Another food for thought I'd like you to consider is the historical resource. While this building that is going to be torn down may not specifically be a historical resource, the entire city of Hermosa Beach is a historical resource. And building over our established height limit, if this happens again and again, it will severely impact the historical treasure that Hermosa Beach is. I know that a lot of people are really, really grateful to see this building go from 50-foot to 34 and 1/2 feet, which I am as well. But even so, I'm curious, if they were such great neighbors, these property developers, why did they invest so much money on trying to what feels like get away with something so huge in the first place? And then when they spent more money to decrease it, why didn't they just take it down to the 30-foot limit and play by all the same rules that the rest of your community members and neighbors have to abide by? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your service. My name's Michelle Walkfogle. I live in Redondo Beach. My parents moved here in 1950 to Manhattan Beach. I was born in 1961, and I was a native of Manhattan Beach. My dad was on the Planning Commission, the school board. He was instrumental in enacting or putting in place a 26-foot height limit in Manhattan Beach, in at least the sand section, which I thought was great. He was also instrumental in squashing what's called mansionization, which on the strand is done, was done. People would buy two and three lots and make one home, a complex. People move here who aren't here already because it's adorable. Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach. It's a small town, small houses. I grew up the street, the same block, grew up the street from Sandun Hill. That became an international training place, and it's closed. You have to make a reservation to go to the park. The things that are happening, that have been happening since really the 80s to this area are just really sad. I'm really sad about this. Thank you for reducing the height. I'm still not clear as to whether or not that's the new height. I would say keep it to the height limit. I agree with the other people who have said, don't make an exception. There are building codes. They're there for a reason. Those are rules. If you don't want to play by the rules, then you can't build here. Do you want it to look like the esplanade? I don't know if you've been to Huntington Beach. There are massive buildings on, like, as the esplanade is on the ocean, on the ocean. I've learned perhaps from the Save Hermosa website that there's going to be an 18-story, I think that's right, 18-story housing unit built at Rosecrance and Sepulveda, Manhattan Beach, and other huge buildings. Maybe there's not a housing shortage. Maybe there are only so many people who can live here. This was a place with one-story beach cottages, two stories max. Play by the rules, I'm saying, to developers. This is not to be developed. It's a place that's beautiful, where you can go to the beach or not, take a walk. I mean, they've got to stick to the rules.
Thank you.
My name is Ann Gothofer, 3512 The Strand, in my 1911 home, which I don't consider a scraper. And I like your remarks. Obviously, I feel the same way about those craftsmen, but obviously, I'm not going to read my little one-minute thing in opposition because I understood, first of all, that this builder's remedy is a one-off. It's not a precedent. There's a lot of misinformation out there that has confused a lot of people, which is unfortunate. The bottom line is, there is, lawsuits have not worked. I mean, you really were not going to have much choice. And the way I was going to end my remarks was to please power down on negotiating with the applicant. Obviously, we don't, I don't need to say that because I'm so grateful, I'm so grateful to the owner and the applicant to take into consideration the community. And so I would just say, don't, just, let's just accept this modification and this new plan. And for those of you who wish it were 30 feet or whatever, that was not, that isn't even an option that they needed to pursue. So let's be realistic and be happy with this, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Nancy Schwapek. I also support the 34-foot plan, but I have some questions about that that I'll go into in a minute. And thank the Ferraros very much. For the 50-foot plan, just to make sure it's on the record, I'd like to make some notes. The comments that were included with the agenda package did not include ecomments from the March hearing. I don't know if they were required to or not, but they weren't there. Some of us were frustrated that prior legal comments that were submitted in the March and subsequently hearings did not appear to be considered in the staff report, and those are outlined quite clearly in Richard's email that was submitted in the ecomments here. Again, this just put everything on the record. I had requested in May, and of course, just because I asked for it doesn't mean you have to do it, but I had requested detailed findings instead of just these conclusory, well, some of them are and some of them aren't, but it doesn't matter because it's builder's remedy. I would have appreciated a detailed breakdown of which ones it does fit, which ones it doesn't fit. Same with general plan. We got two areas that it conformed, but I found at least three that I didn't think it conformed. People have mentioned, but the shadows study, such as it was, only was addressed in the staff report in the context of solar. It was not addressed in the context of health and safety or SEQA. If that plan had gone forward and the city felt they could not deny on the basis of the coastal act, we would have requested that they submit, the city submit a letter of opposition to coastal outlining all the bases on which it does not comply. Cumulative impacts did not take into account that existing non-conforming structure next door, and in my opinion, glossed over the fact that our housing element will come up for renewal, and any developer at any time could claim we are out of compliance. Doesn't mean we are. They could claim we are and bring in a new builder's remedy. And then I'd also like to put on the record that they've admitted that the new project is feasible, which has significant meaning under AB 1893. Now, for the new plan, and thank you again. People are confused. They were confused. They didn't know what they were looking at. The staff report did not address the new plan. It did not provide a detailed assessment. We got the PowerPoint from the applicant. Thank you. I think we still need more time. I think we would like to be able to take a look at the new plan, look at the wiggle room that they're getting, and make sure that it's tight, that they can't go outside the building envelope. I think they should still be conditioned on connecting to the sewer in Hermosa. Anyway, I'd just request you further continue the hearing. There's no need to rush. This has been six months. I think another month, maybe that even accede to it. But that's my request, and thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Francis. I'm 31 years fireman, eight years of that as a battalion chief, seven years as a fire marshal for a three-station city close by, surrounded by LA City and LA County. So I have a lot of experience going through plan checks and approvals and serving on different committees. I'm sorry that I didn't read the ones that are presently before us, but the 55-foot. But I just wanted to make a couple of specific questions. One of them was, I didn't hear anybody mention anything about fire sprinklers. This is if, in the future, there's a 55 limit coming through again. This is if, in the future, there's a 55 limit coming through again. I would love to see some enforcement of a sprinkler ordinance so the building is totally sprinkled. Part of that is, this city has a five-man company. You've got three guys on the engine, two guys paramedics, who are often at the hospital at Torrance or at Little Company. So you might have just three guys showing up. By law, three guys can't go in, or two guys can't go into a building without a third person sitting as backup. But if you have an engineer out on the street that's providing the water at the fire, or somebody at the fire hydrant supplying water, you're limited to wait for some other city to come and show up before you can go in and rescue somebody. That's why it's so important to have sprinklers. Now, a five-story building makes it even more important to have it because you've got multiple floors to inspect. So I just wanted to go on record to make sure that in the future, if somebody does come through with a 55-foot building, there's some sort of provision in their, or conditional permit to have sprinklers. So I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
It's Gray Davis, not Gary. Not to be confused with the governor. Good evening. I imagine this is difficult for you. But you see, like any other Hermosa resident or resident of California, we work our whole lives to make it and buy property down here, preserve our views, enjoy life in the wonderful city of Hermosa Beach, from which I've been in and out of for 32 years. Between, you know, the burdens of our income taxes, then our property taxes, then our sales taxes, honestly, we don't have a whole lot left other than the property that we own down here. And having studied urban planning and worked for the city of Los Angeles, the whole purpose of local ordinances such as building height restrictions is to protect each other and preserve what we have. And each of you commissioners, chairpersons, you signed up for this because you wanted to help us. We need you to protect us and to preserve our community. That is the whole purpose of these standards. It doesn't make sense to set standards if we're going to blow right past them. There's nothing wrong with the building that's there as it is, and there's nothing wrong with them developing to a 30 or 35-foot, depending if it's R2 or R3, or I can't remember which one it is. There's nothing wrong with them building to that specification. But the specifications were put in place so that other residents wouldn't be trampled upon, and our rights would be protected and preserved as property owners. And I plead with you to please understand that that's, that's your mission. And, and, and we need you to fulfill that. Like I said, a lot of us just, we don't, I mean, everyone here is burdened by taxes. If it's not income tax, it's property tax. I pay over almost $50,000 a year in property tax. Now imagine being blocked by someone who's just blowing past the exact ordinances that were created in the first place to protect and preserve our rights. Please keep that in mind. Thank you.
We do not have any other speaker cards, but we do have some on Zoom with virtual hands raised.
Before we move to Zoom, is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to speak on behalf of this item? Please state your name.
Laura Penya. I wasn't sure I was going to speak because I didn't know what the outcome was going to be. I still don't know. I want to thank you, Commissioners, for asking the question to get clarification on the alternative plan. It was helpful. Tonight for me is more about just this one project. To me, it's a case study in how broken our housing system is, when you have state law collide with local policy. And what I think is being overlooked here is this isn't even what the property owners wanted originally. I want to thank you for the Ferraris for submitting that revised plan. It seems like the community, the majority of the community agree. Time and time again, it's the same pattern over and over and over again. You as a property owner, with the existing code, you can choose to do nothing because you can't because of the non-conforming uses, and you can't build on your property, or you use state law to override it, which was the builder's remedy. We shouldn't be forced to make that decision. That's a hard decision. To want to develop a 50-foot project, which is definitely out of character, we shouldn't have to be forced to use that. And so I appreciate the Ferraris coming in with an alternative plan. But the lesson to me is very clear. Our code is outdated. It's too rigid. It doesn't provide for incremental, context-sensitive growth. And it gives property owners no option. In four years, we're going to be going through this again with the builder's remedy. We should be starting these conversations in three years. So please, community, understand. I'm asking for something reasonable so that projects that move forward, particularly in our commercial areas, where over 80% roughly is where the housing element sites are, create feasibility, create feasible guidelines so that we can build. Until we modernize our code, property owners will either just walk away or will use state law. This should not be an all-or-nothing solution. We should do reasonable, incremental, community-forward change. Small lot renovations, viable mixed-use and commercial areas, and parking solutions that protect our coastal access without killing projects. So I'll end with this. Do we want our city's housing future dictated by Sacramento? Or are we ready to shape it ourselves with thoughtful, community-driven solutions? I know where I stand, but it takes all of us to work together and to create the future for all of us, not just the ones who have the rights, but the ones who want to build a home here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers? All right, seeing none, let's move to online comments. First speaker, Kent Allen. You've been unmuted.
Thank you. Just confirm you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Kent Allen. I'm a resident here in Hermosa Beach. I moved here in 1978, and I lived in this little house up here on the hill since 30 years now. Anyways, I was told you're a planning commissioner, so I understand exactly what all you guys were going through, and I appreciate your service. And I, I enjoyed being a planning commissioner, and I, I know sometimes there's difficult projects. First thing I'd like to say is, please do not blame the owners for this project. The owners of this project did nothing wrong. The only thing they tried to do is follow the rules, okay? And, and if you want to, if you want to look to somebody to blame, look to Al Meritucci, Ben Allen, Gavin Newsom, and most importantly, look to Sujah Lowenthal, our city manager. Thank God we got rid of her. It was because of her that we are in this position. It's because of Ben Allen and Al Meritucci and Gavin Newsom that this whole thing is coming down on us. So all of you people who, who think that these people are, the owners are bad people, it's not. If you voted for the, any of those poor people, we don't vote for Sujah. She was appointed. Thank God she's gone. You know, this is, this is good, all right? Now, just keep that in mind. These people have done nothing wrong. And so for anybody to put pressure on, on the owners of this property, it's just wrong. It's, it's just Dancy Nelson stuff, okay? So the other thing I want to say is, I don't really see how you can approve this tonight because you have like a plan, and then there's another plan, and, you know, that other plan, you know, it's sort of like, it's sort of like when they wanted to build a hotel down on the Strand. Hey, we want to build 150 rooms. What did they really want? They wanted 110 rooms. They were hoping you'd say, oh, no, we can't have 150. We're going to build 100, you know, like, so, like, there's no reason to not take another month to think about this, all right? So, you know, that's about all I wanted to say, you know? Thank you, thank you all you people that showed up, and, and just look at who the real problem is. And the real problems are the people like Al Meritucci, Ben Allen, Gavin Newsom, and especially Sujah Long. And for all we know, Susan Lowenthal, for all we know, this was her plan to turn Hermosa into Long Beach, as a former council member who spoke earlier tonight once said. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Do we have other online comments? Yes, we do. John Burry, you've been unmuted.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. It would seem very much as though we are heading towards a compromise that's acceptable to everybody, at least I hope so. I would echo, by the way, Nancy Schwapack's request to give this a little bit more time to allow everybody to review the plan, so people have only had 24 hours to look at. But if it is the case that we're moving towards a compromise, then that's a testament, I think, to both the collective voice of the neighborhood and to the listening skills of the applicants. And I do hope that moving forward that, you know, both sides in this discussion can shake hands and move forward as neighbors. I understand why the applicants couldn't risk giving up their builder's remedy leverage on the way to this alternative, because that's how negotiation works. They were using what they had, and they've been, I think, gracious in providing the alternative. But my real observation tonight is that public comment really, really matters. You know, back in March, people said that there was nothing that could be done about this, and they were wrong, and your voice matters, and you should never, ever forget that. And I think it's interesting, I don't hear many voices tonight from the Keep Hermosa Hermosa group. Apparently, Keep Hermosa Hermosa was about oil, but not about views and, and respecting our neighbors when it comes to building. Don't let your voice be silenced. Use public comment. And if anybody ever tries to tell you again that it's the fault of the residents that this city's housing element was late, just tell them to give their head a wobble. We had a city manager who claimed to be a planner and three attorneys on the council at the time, and the fault lies with them, not with you. Thank you.
Do we have other online comments? Caller Mike, you've been unmuted.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name's Mike Tridle. I live on Second Street, and I've been a resident of Hermosa Beach since 2017. One of the things I love most about Hermosa Beach is the tight-knit community, the, the great vibes and the proximity to the beach. So first, I was a little disappointed at how confused everyone was, including myself, about the different plans. It really shouldn't be that way. And so all I can say to that is, I think we should have more time. I think we should get to a point where everyone's had time to read the plans and that we have clarity in the meeting so everyone can, can make an informed decision. This is not the kind of thing to rush. Secondly, it's great that the, the height has been reduced from 50 to 35, but as I understand it, the limit's 30. Rules are rules. But more important than the rules is the spirit. You know, it's, it's good manners. It's about being a good neighbor. And, you know, as one of the other, other gentlemen said earlier, it's about the planning commission protecting the residents from overdevelopment. We don't want to be the next Long Beach, the next Santa Monica. It's a bit of a creep where little by little, the houses get bigger, and it does set a dangerous precedent. It's a slippery slope. So that's, that's all for my comments. Thank you to the planning commission for having us here tonight. And please, please give it another month or two before voting or taking action on this matter. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. We have one more caller. Anthony Higgins, you've been unmuted.
Hello, I assume you can hear me. Just very quickly, if in fact the, the applicant has withdrawn the 50.5-foot limit and is willing to accept a 34-foot limit, then I think that's a reasonable compromise, providing the, the residents are given, you know, a one-month extension to look at that plan in a little bit more detail. But it seems like you're on the right track, and I feel good about the way the community, you know, responded, both out of personal interest and out of interest in their neighbors' welfare. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
There is one more caller. Isa, you've been unmuted. Please unmute on your, on your side.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to thank you, Commissioners, for your time. I know this is a really rough situation that you are always putting in the spot, trying to make really rough decisions. But I just want to echo the sentiments of my neighbors. I live on Second Street, near Prospect, and I see things coming, you know, and how things are happening. We keep opening a window for new rules. We keep bumping. We keep making exceptions. And then the problem is that that's how we start going downhill. And then at the end of the day, we're actually trying to do good, but in the long run, we're going to end it up with a community that is losing the value, is losing the original intention of being smaller, trying to keep things here in-house with the values that we want, that we work for, because we'll work really hard to be here. And, and I, I truly understand. We want to kind of like make also like things in a way that are affordable, but also we want to give quality of life. We're actually even reducing from 50 to 30, almost five, what will be even the end result of that apartment for the person that is going to move in? So then I think that we also need to be realistic. We're trying to compromise. We're trying to give something, but at the end of the day, what is about this? You know, let's think about quality. Let's think also about what we are compromising and what we are giving up. I ask for more time, and I also ask to consider, you're bumping, you keep saying, now it's better, now we have not 50 but 34, which is good, but then the next application is going to be 40, then they're going to say, okay, so I'm going to compromise. It's going to be 38. And then we're going to keep bumping. We're going to keep bumping till ended up, we're going to end it up here with buildings similar to Santa Monica. And then the community is going to start seeing how it's going to start getting broken. And that's something that internally, I don't want to see that for my kids and my family and my community and my friends. And think that we're here united, and we are here living in this type of city because it's smaller and we care about. We're not here about thinking about the money and thinking about companies coming, like new businesses. like new businesses, yes, we want businesses, but we support people that they work really hard, um, because they wanna be part of this community. Thank you.
There are no additional hands raised. Um, all right, I would like to invite the applicant back to the podium if you have any, uh, responses to the public comment tonight.
And Chair Hirsch, members of the commission. No, we listened to lots of very thoughtful comments, many of them at a very high level of what's happened in, in the legislature, um, with respect to, again, home rule, which is precious thing, I don't deny that at all. The zoning powers are the beating heart of the police powers of local government. Um, the state, the state legislature has decided that there was a crisis, um, statewide, and they have implemented state, certain laws. I wanted to say something because I think there was a, a concern still persisting about precedent, and some people mentioned about the site, you know, renewing this housing element in four years or whatever it's gonna arise, that this door might open again. Well, not as the law's currently written, okay? It's interesting to note, and I don't wanna get too academic here, but the builder's remedy really was on the books since nineteen eighty-two. That's forty-three years. It was never used, because it couldn't be used, until SB thirty-three came out in twenty nineteen. What SB three-to-three, thirty-three, or three-thirty, forgive me, correction, SB three-thirty did, is it allowed developers to lock in the vesting, to vest the state of affairs that was in place when they submit a very simple form called the preliminary application. The preliminary application is unprecedented, because the state created the zoning application, and they told every local government, you gotta adopt this. And once they're submitted, you, you lock in the state of affairs, you freeze time. That allowed people to use the builder's remedy, because you freeze the time when the housing element wasn't certified, and even if you certify it the day after, you get to still pursue that. Now, what's gonna happen in twenty thirty is SB three-thirty, by its own terms, will sunset, and the preliminary application process will sunset. Can the legislature extend that? Sh- they could do anything they want, maybe, but right now, that's the wa- that's the way that this law's written, which is, just to underscore, this window has shut on the builder's remedy, as of this date, that's the way the law is written. I think that's the main thing I wanted to say. I'm not sure that there's much more to say in, in addition to that, but I appreciate the comment, I appreciate the debate, I appreciate all of the, you know, the support for the alternative. By way of clarification, uh, on that, and I think the city attorney and the community development director have done well enough to explain, we're willing to go with that project. It's up to you guys to deliberate on it, but we're willing to take that project as a condition of approval. Um, again, always ready and, uh, to answer further questions, and appreciate, again, your time, thanks.
Thank you. All right, before I bring it back to the commission for deliberation, do we have any follow-up questions of staff or the applicant from the commissioners before we close public comment?
I do.
Okay, Commissioner Flaherty.
So we've heard on several occasions from several people about builder's remedy, and the window was closed, the window was open, uh, could you expand on that at your level, not on the applicant's level?
Sure. So, the builder's remedy is essentially, it's, it's, um, the window of opportunity for someone to submit a builder's remedy application. It's dependent on whether or not the jurisdiction, so the city, has a certified housing element. As of the time that the preliminary application was submitted for this project, which was back in February of twenty-four, the city did not have a certified housing element. The city did certify, have a certified housing element as of August of last year. Uh, that certification is currently valid through this housing cycle. Uh, the city will begin, and in fact, I think in a large part, staff has already begun thinking about the next housing cycle, which is due to begin, um, in the next couple of years here. So, uh, the opportunity for more builder's remedy applications to come forward to the city during this housing element cycle has closed, and that is as of August of last year. Of course, as the applicant representative did, uh, speak to, um, the builder's remedy is set to sunset in twenty thirty, um, but that is still within the next housing element cycle. So, if, uh, for example, in the next housing element cycle, um, the city does not have a certified housing element, we may run into this once again. And I'm not going to speak too much of that, because I don't wanna give the director or staff headaches of thinking about the next housing element cycle. But that is well off in the future, so for today's purposes, um, there are no further opportunities as of today to submit a builder's remedy application.
Thank you.
Is this the only builder's remedy application that was submitted to the city?
Yes.
Thanks. All right, uh, no further questions of my fellow commissioners, I will close the public comment portion of this hearing and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Commissioner Flaherty, do you wanna kick us off?
Sure. I guess I am bothered by a letter that I received yesterday. This seems to be the third iteration of this project. We had an original project, uh, fifty-foot plus, we saw plenty of pictures, uh, that depicted the project, none of them, uh, or at least the ones I saw, weren't to scale, and so they were a little skewed. Tonight, I am, I realize that we do have in front of us, for the first time, a project plans that shows the scale of that, uh, of that, uh, height limit especially, but coming to me, within a twenty-four-hour period, leaves me some concerns. I know how much it took to produce, uh, just the item before us on, uh, seven A. That was months and months of work of applica- applications, back and forth, and it turned out to be a great project. There are numerous questions, uh, I have within the eighteen different categories of attachments, so I wanna make sure I know about our five-meeting rule. Can we call this meeting number two A, and next month, meeting number two B?
I do wish we could, Commissioner. Um, unfortunately, so for the benefit of the public, um, I will remind everyone here that, uh, there is a five-public hearing rule that the city must abide by. That means that the city has five public hearings to consider, and then either approve or deny the project. That is, uh, citywide, so that also includes city council as well. This is public hearing number two. If we were to continue this hearing, um, state law does require that, that we consider the continued hearing to be a separate public hearing, so that would bring us to public hearing number three. Of course, it is three out of five, so that is an option before the commission tonight.
Thank you. I think most of the meat and potato work is done at this level, and I appreciate what the council does and what their authority is, but most of the energy and synergy for developing a project, debating a project, happens at this level. I know that we don't wanna get too close to that five at the planning commission, but I'm really uncomfortable taking the input that we had tonight, taking an, um, uh, a, conceptual project alternative, which I applaud, and not applying it to a complete document that would analyze that document the same way as, uh, months of analyzation of the fifty-foot document. I mean, that was months of work. I'm hesitant. I just need some coaching, why we should end this, or project it, or give you a recommendation that allows this to be the final meeting of the planning commission, and allow the council the liberty of having three meetings, because there's all kinds of good ha- things could happen between now and their final review. Is there any way? There's a lot of documents involved here, this is not, as we did at the last meeting, we suggested some language on two or three items within the document. We changed them light, you wa- you offered your opinion how you should rewrite a certain paragraph or a certain sentence. That's nowhere near what we're at tonight with the type of documents that need to be re-studied. For example, the shadowing document, if you go from fifty-point-five feet down to thirty-four-point-whatever, thirty-five feet, that shadowing document has little or no value. The fire department report, as weak as it was, in my opinion, um, has a whole different meaning when you're dealing with a thirty-foot building versus a fifty-foot building. The number of response time from neighboring cities, uh, the, our fire department county gives a report on a regular basis to the city council on how many calls they get, how quick they respond, it's documented. Don't understand why we didn't get more in-depth, knowing how serious this was. So I think there's at least a half dozen items that I feel at disdain, I, I'm waiting to be convinced, how you could merge all this new information from a document that's, that I received yesterday, that is designed by, by a, one of the top design firms in the South Bay that we've had before us, that gentleman and that company, many times, top, top of the line, but, um, again, is nowhere close to, uh, responding to some of the internal questions that were asked in the original document. I appreciate any direction that staff can give me, and how I can feel more comfortable on moving this thing forward, because I think that's the most important factor. I saw three things tonight. I saw neighbors get together, I saw, uh, designers and property owners who have a property right that I'm very strong about, uh, redevelop their property based on neighborhood. In my neighborhood, I'm celebrating the forty-fifth annual chili cook-off a couple weeks from now. That's how long we've been in neighbors, so I appreciate neighborhoods, what neighborhoods do. I'm, I, I feel uncomfortable about thirty-five, but I watch the neighbors feel comfortable, and that's important to me. I'm more than willing to move forward with this conceptual project alternative. I need some convincing by the staff. If I could.
Should we hear from other planning commissioners? Should we hear from other commissioners? Okay. Uh, Vice Chair Isaiah.
Uh, at this point, I'm more comfortable than my colleague. Let's take the project seven A. The first time that we saw that was Thursday. We had no significant questions. If this project was not a builder's remedy project, if it was just seven B, four units coming before us, um, I doubt if we'd have any significant questions. We would not have a question about the fire department, because that would now, that no longer applies. Yes, I was the one who asked the question back in March. How in the heck is a fifty-foot ladder gonna get up, I mean, fifty, ladder got to fifty feet? Well, now it's thirty-six feet. So, and you mentioned the top design firm in the South Bay. I absolutely agree. I also agree that we have a very talented, detail-oriented staff, and I'm willing to trust them, that they're gonna get it right. It's not time for a motion yet, but if this particular body was to move ahead with the alternative plan, then, you know, part of that motion would be to have staff rewrite the existing document that we have before us to conform substantially, I'll use the word substantially, to the presentation that was seen tonight, as well as what's in this letter. So, I'm, I, I guess, again, I guess I'm more, more comfortable between Louis tomorrow and what the kind of work this staff does. I'm, I'm not worried about saying, based on what we saw, let them modify this docu- let them amend this document, and let it be in substantial conformance to what we saw. And what we saw tonight, I'll go back, if this wasn't a builder's remedy program, if it wasn't before us's fifty feet, if this was just another four-unit building tonight, we wouldn't have any more questions than we had on seven A. So, I, I'm in a slightly different camp. I'm, I'm comfortable with Louis tomorrow and, and the staff. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. McNally?
Do I understand that y- you're willing to move things for? So, I wanna say thank you for the applicant. I think they made considerable adjustments and heard the city. I'm still trying to take in our meeting in March, which there was so much objection to this project, and we're so much closer, but once again, this, this revised document hit my computer on Thursday night, and I have not had the time to, to really understand, uh, the adjustments. And while it's really, really reduced, it still is above thirty feet, and, um, I, I wish it wasn't, but I, I appreciate the reduction, so I, too, am still not at a place where I believe I can make an informed decision, so, is that, is that what I'm hearing from my colleagues?
Um, I guess I'll weigh in. I am conflicted, because, uh, I, what was presented to us in the staff report is very different from what was presented to us from the applicant. So, tying those two things to debt together is not a, you know, very straightforward, although I think we could probably achieve it tonight. Where I have concerns is, I think, through public comment, what we heard was an overwhelming support from the local community, uh, with regards to the direction that this project has transformed into, as a result of really listening and responding to the community feedback. I understand that there's some, uh, community members who also think that we need some more time. My concern is, we have been presented from staff with a fifty-foot project. The applicant has agreed through their presentation with a thirty-five-ish foot project. If we continue this item, or don't vote on it, I am concerned that we might be exposed to not seeing a thirty-five-foot project come back to us. We have the, uh, we have the, the document in front of us now, um, and I, and I wanna make sure that we are being thoughtful as a commission and responsive to the community within the confines of what we're allowed to do, and that is my concern. If we, if we do not take action tonight, do we expose this project to look something different in a month from now?
I've got some thoughts, but let's hear from staff.
Thank you. So I wanted to kind of address the question of, can we be ready? And the question of the height limit, and then the question of the, um, the coastal development permit? Um, because I think, um, the, the action that we would take this evening, that the commission could take this evening, would of course create a conditional approval, right? So, or a conceptual approval, I think is the technical language that we use. And then that gets transferred to the coastal commission for their whole new application process. The coastal commission, as the city attorney described, will be using our, um, local land use, coastal land use plan- coastal land use plan as their guide as they're making decisions. And our coastal land use plan does identify 35 feet as the maximum height under that coastal development plan. So while there is a disconnect, a minor disconnect, between our local zoning height ordinance, which is at 30 feet, our coastal development plan does allow up to 35. So that will provide the coastal commission with room to make a final determination on the question of height. Now, I will have to align with the vice chair with respect to staff's ability to properly support the commission if you choose tonight to approve an alternative concept. We have the plans that have been submitted. We have a resolution which contains many, many conditions which are customary when we're conditioning projects of this type. We also have a city attorney who can provide the nuanced, you know, kind of recommendations that you might offer. So I think we're well-equipped in the event that the commission would choose. I will, you know, caution, as was mentioned again by the city attorney, that we do only have five meetings. We do need to anticipate or provide for a cushion in the event that the council has this case before it. And if we're at a point where we're generally feeling comfortable with the revised proposal, that it might just be, we might be ready to move.
I guess I would ask my colleagues, I understand, I hear and I understand the uneasiness, but what do you expect to be different 30 days from now? The design is going to be what the design is tonight. Maybe your window's going to move, but it's going to be 36 feet. It's going to be so high, so wide, so long. It's going to have all the conditions that are currently in the existing resolution merely updated or tweaked to reflect this particular design. So again, I hear the uneasiness, but I'm not sure what will be substantially different. The height's not going to go down. This is a builder's remedy project.
Sleep on it.
So again, obviously, Clary, I'm more comfortable than Tony, but I don't expect that you're going to find anything substantially different that would cause you to, 30 days from now, vote against the project or to turn it down.
Well, I guess, first of all, I'm in the parking lot ready for that new car. I want you to give me the keys. I need to take a test drive. Explain to me how a document would be created that would allow us to make this decision tonight, and that document then would hold water enough to, as Steve explains, and I appreciate your insight and your statements, but we've never, ever approved a document this far as skewed from original summation. I mean, we was, the staff was still presenting a 50-foot height document tonight. Halfway through, we received another alternative. I'm very excited about that alternative. I listened to the neighbors. They're the ones that really have persuaded me. But tell me what that document looks like so I can feel comfortable as we leave tonight that there will be some, as you said, over the years, we tweak a paragraph here, a sentence here, an introduction here, but this is big. This is a big document that needs to be adjusted based on the presentation. Because more than just the element called, the design element of it, that's just one tenth of what is in this document. So I appreciate, again, you give me the keys. I need to do the drive.
No, I appreciate that, Commissioner, of course. So you have all, over the past couple of months, walked through us when we have recommended some line item changes, like you mentioned. This would definitely be a bigger change, but the process would be the same. So I would ask or recommend, if the commission is inclined, to try and amend the resolution before you tonight, which, as Director Becker mentioned, it contains conditions of approvals that are very customary from my review of the document, and I'm sure staff could speak more to this as well. The only condition of approval that I believe would need to be tweaked is condition of approval one, which specifies which plans are being approved. So, and I would also recommend that the commission add a finding into the resolution as well to recap what has occurred at the Planning Commission public hearing tonight, the fact that the applicant submitted and presented the project alternative and indicated that they would accept moving forward with the project alternative if that was preferable by the commission. In order to get that done, I would ask that the, and of course, I've been typing furiously, that the commission direct staff to amend the resolution and conditions of approval to approve, incorporate, and reflect the project alternative as presented and submitted by the project applicant to the Planning Commission at its public hearing on the project on September 16th, 2025. That would be direction number one. And then we would go into staff's recommendation, which would then be, you know, determine that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA, and then finally approve the application and adopt the resolution. Attachment one, approving the separate entitlements. Again, reflecting, incorporating, and approving the project alternative as submitted by the project applicant. I know that was a lot.
Try to get my head around that, too. Okay. Rewrite the application. Rewrite what we had tonight and then talk about it in October.
What is microphone on?
I'm sorry. And then rewrite it and then make a decision in October, not tonight?
We believe that we can move forward on this tonight if the commission is so inclined with those amendments to the resolution.
With those amendments.
And that's a product of the fact that the resolution, and again, the conditions of approval here are customary, they're uniform, they're conditions of approval that we present and apply to all of our different housing development projects. So there is really nothing customized to the project except for that condition of approval one, which I would recommend that you tweak.
Okay. I've been moved by the applicant and by public comment, so I'm willing to move forward with how my colleagues.
Can you, can staff or council talk to us about substantial conformance? And the reason I'm asking is, what was presented by the applicant tonight was conceptual. What was submitted to the file yesterday by the applicant's attorney had more detailed information, which was different from what we received, what's posted on the conceptual plans. So the conceptual plans call out a certain height. The plans that we received yesterday call out a different height. And the plans that were presented tonight, I'm going off recollection, but I don't think they specifically called out heights. So given that that is one of the most sensitive points of this project, can we, as a commission, have a very clear line on, and maybe that becomes a condition in and of itself, as to what we are approving as reflected in the different versions of the plans?
Yeah, I would just say that, as I understand the applicant's presentation this evening, the plans that we would be using are the most developed plans that were submitted yesterday. Is that correct? And so we can reference them by date, number of sheets, there are a variety of ways that we can specify, so we're working off of the same documents.
Chair Hirsch, I would note, we have a 13-page resolution. The only thing that's going to change on that resolution are some of the statistics on page four and page five, plus the specific plan in this letter of September 12. And so substantially similar, and we would put, even though height is notated on these plans, in the resolution, I would add language of a maximum height of 36 feet. But, I'm sorry, 36?
35, 35 feet, 3 inches.
34.
So that's the conflict, right? What was shown yesterday is 35 feet, 3 inches. What was shown last week was 34 feet and change, so.
Oh, come on, gang. Let's just say 35 feet maximum and/or substantially similar. So what's a couple of inches among friends? We're not talking 48.
Yeah, well.
The attachment that it, sorry, the submission that the applicant attached to E-Grid shows a max building height of 35 feet and 3/4 inches is what I'm seeing based on that.
35 feet, 3 and 1/4 inch.
3 and 1/4 inch.
But doesn't have to be under 35 for coastal commission?
Coastal commission would likely impose the 35-foot height limit.
So it has to be adjusted.
All right, so make the resolution 35 feet. You're going to, or we'll save 3 inches. Great.
Commissioners, too, if I could add, we could also add, as Alexis mentioned, the conceptual plans that were submitted yesterday, we can add those as the exhibit to the resolution to make it incredibly clear within that condition of approval number one exactly which plans we're talking about. We're talking about the plans submitted to the planning, or to the planning staff on September 15th, which were then presented by the applicant to the Planning Commission on September 16th.
And what is the height on those plans?
The maximum height that I am seeing as measured is 35 feet, 3 and 1/4 inch.
But if we approve that, it's not going to give the applicant an opportunity to be successful with the coastal commission, correct?
The coastal commission has the authority to condition a project downward if that would make it conforming.
I would also remind the commission that that might be the purview of the coastal commission regarding the standards that they will approve for their CDPs. It's not necessarily what's before us tonight.
Chair Hirsch, so I move Staff Resolution 25XX, approving precise development plan which is represented as the alternative proposal, as seen in these plans, with a maximum height of 35 feet, and they'll find the 3 inches somewhere. I also ask that the language of this resolution be updated to reflect the testimony that we've heard tonight as well as what's reflected in these plans. And that's my motion.
Can we speak to the motion?
Yeah, I think we still can, right? Yeah, go ahead.
I do appreciate all the energy that we spent on this item, too, not just the staff and the audience and the neighbors and the applicant, for sure. But I want to make sure we get it right. There's a lot writing on this particular item, not just for the applicant, but for the neighbors and for the city itself. So our attorney has presented a very nice presentation in how she would do that. Is there a document that will be produced as it continues on towards the council with that type of language?
Yes. I will, we'll work with staff, we will work together, as we have on other resolutions that we have tweaked, using these directives to staff to reflect those edits in the condition of approval one, to reflect those edits in the finding, and to ensure that the record reflects the correct plans that are being approved tonight, which is the conceptual alternative design.
With the amended motion on the floor, which maximizes the height at 35 feet, which is not reflected in the plans, right? Okay.
He'll find the 3 inches.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a vote? We'll do a roll call vote. The motion was updated as amended, so it's not the title, but the, to determine that the project is categorically exempt, that's the language of the draft of motion, which will be updated after tonight's meeting. Commissioner McNally?
I voted. Did it not go through?
We'll just do a roll call vote. Commissioner Flaherty is having trouble.
No problem.
Did you vote on the machine?
Yeah.
Mine didn't show up.
That's okay. I approve.
Commissioner Flaherty?
Yes.
Commissioner Zant?
Yes.
Chairperson Hirsch?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, noting the absence of Commissioner Hoffman. Okay. Moving on to item number eight, staff items, 8A. Can we have the community development director's report?
I don't have anything substantive to share tonight. Thank you so much.
Okay.
How could mine not vote, show up again? Is it my computer?
Item number nine, staff commission, or sorry, Planning Commission comments. Do we have any, Planning Commissioner members may briefly respond to public comments, may ask a question for clarification, or make a brief announcement or report on her own activities or meetings attended.
Chair Hirsch, I have a question for our director. I believe it was in this morning's LA Times, I read about the legislature and the governors passing and signing that bill that'll, pardon?
SB 79.
Maybe we should just pause for a second while the, okay.
Yeah, can you have them move out or something?
If we can kindly ask that conversations are held in the lobbies because, so we can finish out our meeting, I appreciate it. Thank you guys so much. Thank you. Vice Chair Izant, you were asking about SB 79.
Yes. Director, do you have any updated information on, or speculation on how that might apply to us?
We did quite a bit of looking at this a few months ago as it was beginning to become clear that it actually had a shot at passing. And for, for all intents and purposes, SB 79 will not have an impact on Hermosa And for, for all intents and purposes, SB 79 will not have an impact on Hermosa Beach, given the way that the definitions for transit-oriented development are, are defined. Yeah.
Any other Planning Commissioner comments? All right, moving on to item number 10, future agenda items. 10A, Planning Commission tentative future agenda 25-CDD-130. I guess, I forget, do we talk about this, or we just have a motion? Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt the, or approve the future agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a vote?
Voting is now open.
There we are. I get to vote on this thing.
You just wanted us all to have to say our vote verbally.
I'm sorry, I shut my computer down. Hang on.
Commissioner?
There we go. Okay, I just, I did it. All right, sorry.
All right. Okay.
Motion carries unanimously, noting Commissioner Hoffman's absence.
Okay. Now on to item number 11, adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye.